Could you stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 11, 2014 Commission Meeting. If I remind you to silence your cell phones, we have a meeting documents are available on the end of the counter in the black folder. If you need listening devices, they are available from Robert in the front row. And with that, we will move on to business.
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 4, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $309,633.29.
Pay the bills. Second with a comment.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Pecos.
Well, Cindy informed me that there's a minor misprint on the actual bills that were presented to us, but it's correct on our sheet, so we're going with what's on the sheet.
Commissioner Barth.
There's also, today's bills include 60 grand for equipment and software and IT and another 50 grand, I think, in the medical payments.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for January 2014 has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I have a motion for routine.
So moved.
A motion. That's a second. Carrie, any comments?
Not on the routine, no.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for routine action. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Under special personnel actions, item number one is to increase the pay rate for Melinda Story. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver, Human Resources. The next two items on your agenda are very similar. They're both to approve 5 percent pay increases for two administrative clerks underneath the sheriff's office. Both individuals have taken on significant amounts of higher level functions, but not quite enough to reclassify their positions, so we're asking for your approval of a 5 percent increase for both instead. Michelle Boyd is here if you have questions, any requests.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is it okay to make this a joint? Okay. I have a motion and a second to consensual special action for two employees. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Can I have a brief comment? I know Melinda Story also speaks Spanish, correct? Yep. And she sometimes is an ad hoc interpreter when we need to have her do that. I've known her a long time. She's a great asset.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Item number six is application for abatement. Kyle Helsa. Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Director of Equalization. We bring before you this morning one request for abatement from the United Methodist Church of Del Rapids. They converted a single-family home into a parsonage and its record ID 22110 in the amount of $2,878.62.
We move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth.
So, at $2,000, it's not a half a million dollar house that, right?
I believe its total value is $148,000.
Because we do have parsonages that are worth quite a bit in this county.
Yes.
Shows a taxable value of $114,709.
There was land involved at one time, but it's now a building on lease site.
Additional comments? Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to approve the United Methodist Church of Del Rapids for a property tax abatement. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
The next application for abatement will be from Pam Nelson.
Pam Nelson, County Treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, Pam.
I have one abatement for the elderly assessment freeze, and it's for ID number 82433 for a total of $134.48.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the elderly freeze. Any comments or questions for Pam? All those in favor of approving the elderly assessment freeze for $134.48 on ID number 82433, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no notices and requests today, and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecos.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPO number 38453 in the amount of $4,598.90. The applicant actually is our collection agency, Arnie Haughey, and he is actually, not Arnie Haughey, it's Haughey and Associates. But anyway, it is a request to go ahead and accept the offer that is actually being made by the recipient of the services from the county. There has been a payment history from the applicant, or excuse me, the person that received the services. There are payments totaling $980, bringing the balance down to $4,998.90. Once again, that lien was turned over to our collection agency back in 2011, and there has been no payment due to the fact that unfortunately this applicant or the person that received the services has five minor children and has a limited ability to pay. Haughey is making the recommendation to us to go ahead and accept the one-time offer of full payment of $2,299.45, which is approximately 50 percent that she's expecting on receiving from her income tax return. I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Commissioner Barth.
Just in looking at her record there, 20 times she's made payments on this. 20 times. That's really a very good record for most of our folks in this position, and we certainly need to try to collect as much as we can considering the tens of millions that are owed the county, which could come in very handy. But this person has done their, made a good effort, in my view.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien on DPO 38453 for the amount of $2,299.45. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time for the public to make any comments of anything that is not on our agenda today. Oh, Mr. Jamison, hiding behind the pulpit.
I was hiding as long as I could.
Good morning.
Good morning. Greg Jamison, I serve on Sioux Falls City Council. I could have sent an email to you, but I decided to come in person to try to make this message as personal as possible. Couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, I sat in this room and listened to your report on your problem with the growing capacity issues on the jail. And I even heard Gerald Benega this morning on the radio. I won't call it whining, but I'll.
Good job, Gerald.
Concerned about some issues in the growing crime problem we have in Sioux Falls. I just wanted to convey that I recognize those problems from the city's perspective. I actually live in Lincoln County, but I live in Sioux Falls, and as just like you, this is our community, and I think we have a problem in this community that needs addressing. And I would just reach out as a city commissioner to, city council member, to the commissioners, that we should try to work together as a community to solve this problem. I'm not sure about dividing up some of our sales tax revenues. That's pretty precious stuff, but I think, and I don't know where all the answers are, but I'll bet if your group and the city council group, the mayor's office, Lincoln County, and others got involved and got in the same room, I'm sure we could figure some things out. So I just come today as an attempt to reach out and let you know that we're willing, I'm willing, to work together with you to try to solve some of these problems. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner, Commissioner, for council member?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for coming a couple of weeks back when we had that report about our projected capacity for the jail, but, you know, it does seem like the media has not really recognized the problems we have with the crime in our county that winds up in our jail, in our courts, and in the Lincoln County courts as well. And, you know, whether it's just a question of new people coming to town, or the wages that people get, or changing culture, I don't know, but I really sincerely appreciate you being here, and, you know, if we can work together on these things, I would look forward to that.
Any other comments or questions for council member?
Well, I hope I didn't ruin your breakfast. I don't want to appear that I was whining, but the facts are that one side of government can't be responsible for the positive growth and the other side be responsible for the negative without any distribution of the revenue that brings people to our community. So, the issue is, it is a joint problem, and people seem to forget that we have all those responsibilities for public safety and for health and human services, and that's become together, those two pieces are almost two-thirds of our budget now. And we encourage growth, too, but there's a part of growth that's been ignored other than the fact that we're faced now with a significant problem that needs to be solved. And whatever the city can do, or whatever half of Sioux Falls going from 57th Street South can do to help us with this issue, it needs to be done, because otherwise, as it was brought up, I think, this week or last week, I forgot what meeting we were at, but Sioux Falls has as many arrests as Omaha, Nebraska, which to me was shocking, to be honest. I'd never heard that figure before, and I think it's imperative that we start working on trying to solve this together. So thank you for coming.
Good day.
Commissioner Pecos.
Well, I think Greg proposes, and I think one of the simple solutions would be, for example, when a police officer has a choice of writing a ticket, let's say, for disorderly conduct or disturbing the peace, if it's a disturbing the peace ordinance violation, that'd be handled by the Sioux Falls City Attorney's Office. If it's a disorderly conduct charge under South Dakota law, it comes to the state's attorney's office, and then Kirsten gets to deal with it. So, you know, if there's a choice being made, and if you're going to charge somebody for a simple class-two misdemeanor, write a city ordinance violation and let your city prosecutors deal with it as opposed to dumping it off on the state's attorney's office. We've got tons of files and plenty of workload, and I know you guys have a very good city attorney staff, so, just a suggestion.
Someone made a good comment yesterday, I don't know if it was a fellow commissioner. They said every time an officer says you're under arrest, it becomes the county's tax dollars that are taking care of that person from then on, and it is a problem. Those couple little words are very expensive words. Commissioner Barth.
Well, I just want to say that we had a meeting yesterday talking about the building programs and, you know, the idea of building a jail for $20 million and staffing it for $10 million a year, you know, that would be a 50 percent increase in our county share of property tax. I honestly woke up at 3:00 this morning, and at 4:00 I got out of bed and went and made coffee, and I've been up since then, but I woke up thinking, how can I raise taxes? 50 percent on the county share. I, it's distressing, and we have to find other solutions than brick and mortar and tasers.
Go ahead.
If I could add one thing, you're right, you're talking about housing and dealing with the aftermath. I think one of the focuses the city could make is on preventing a lot of those crimes from ever happening, and here's already some unique ideas to solve that. I just think we've got great opportunities to make a fix here without raising our property taxes 50 percent.
Right.
So, doing something first before we do that.
Right.
That's all I would ask. Well, thank you very much for the time today.
Thank you. Commissioner Jameson. Yep, thank you very much. With that, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Regular business. Item number 10 is consider recommendation from the Suland Heritage Museum Board, Board of Directors for Realtor Services for the sale of Minnehaha County-owned vered land parcel. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museum. Just for a moment to fill people in, about five years ago, a couple, Bob and Kari Hall, made a generous donation of 24.97 acres to Minnehaha County on behalf of the Suland Heritage Museums. Five acres to be a site for a place, a building to store the museum's collection, taking care of a lot of different needs, including the preservation of the old courthouse museum. 19.97 acres that could be sold, the proceeds from which could go towards the construction of that building. In September, the Board of the Suland Heritage Museums, which consists of five people appointed by the county, five by the city, and it represented the museum's alliance, passed resolution recommending that 19.97 acres be surplus and that it be listed by a licensed commercial realtor, which is one of the three ways the county has available to it for the disposal of land, and made that recommendation. Following the supplemental agreement between the city and the county regarding the construction of that property, in which we specify that that 19.97 acres will be sold for the construction of the building, representing hopefully one-third of the construction cost, the county went out for proposals, asking for realtors to make proposals for brokerage services to sell that land. We received two proposals. They were opened on January 16. Those two proposals were reviewed by a committee of the museum's board and then by the full board on February 6, and the board committee's recommendation, both proposals were from very reputable realtor firms. They're both good proposals. I think when it came down to it, the board of, the committee, board committee and the board really looked at the effort that had been put into the specific proposal in developing it. And it really came down to the recommendation that you awarded to Nelson Property Consultants, came down to the amount of work or thought that the firm put into their proposal. The board has a desire to expedite the sale of this land and move this project forward as quickly as possible. In their resolution in September that I think you have, they recommended a minimum listing price and a price below which they would not endorse selling the land. I think that in employing realty services, you have the opportunity to set what your asking price is, which could be above that of what the museum board is. The museum board is an advisory board, and their recommendation, based just on splitting hairs really and the quality of presentation, is to hire Nelson Property Consultants. But it really came down to the forethought and of the presentation by Nelson versus Mr. Bender. Not that Bender's proposal was a bad proposal in any way.
Are there any questions for Bill? I have a couple. Did you do interviews? That was one of the factors that was listed into the evaluation process, was the possibility of interviewing both sides.
No, there were no interviews done.
Okay. I'm also wondering about the price structure, because there is a difference in the price structure, and I was wondering if that was part of your evaluation process.
That was a discussion, and under some circumstances, Bender would, Bender's fee could be less. It could be 5 percent. It could be 5 and 1/2 percent. It could be 6 percent. It really depended on the seller. Ron Nelson said that in particular, again, he emphasized the speed with which he wanted to move this project forward, which reflected museum board's desire, and his fee is 6 percent. And it was a factor that they considered in making their recommendation.
Any other questions for Bill? You have another one? Go ahead.
Bill, why is speed such a big issue? Speed could be a problem with, frankly, the price of the property.
It could be.
Because if you look around on the property, excuse me, but if you look around at the property map that was presented, there's a difference of 2.50 to 5 bucks within a half a mile of that facility.
I, I'm not a realtor, Gerald. I am, and the realtors could probably speak to what your desired value might be of the various properties. Those recommendations that the board made in terms of price came based upon some of the evaluations that had been done in the past, and that was before we asked for proposals for realtor services. I am just communicating what my board's opinion was. Each of them looked at the proposals themselves. It was a unanimous decision. But again, my understanding is that's an advisory board making a recommendation to the commission. The commission can make whatever decision you want to make.
Precisely.
Yep.
I just want to point out that, you know, that is just a recommendation, because the stewards of the public money and the stewards of this particular property are sitting at this bench. So, you know, although we've got the proposal and we've seen that, you know, he's looking at, what, 2.50, you know, what's interesting is that obviously it's going to be our decision on whether or not we act on that. And so, just because the museum board made a recommendation, it's our responsibility to make sure that it's going to be appropriate for basically disposing of this particular property.
I think we should, go ahead.
I believe that Mr. Bender and Mr. Nelson are both here. If you have specific questions about their proposals, I'm certain maybe more than happy to get out there.
And I would like to give an opportunity for you each to make, you know, a short pitch if you would like to. Whoever wants to go first?
Again, I just want to say, they're both excellent.
Yeah, I believe that. I read their proposals.
And it had nothing to do with that.
Good morning, Commission. I'm Michael Bender, founder and one of the partners of Bender Commercial Real Estate Services. Thank you for having us here. I'm going to actually let Doug spend time on the specifics of the proposal, my partner, Doug Brockhaus, but I did want to remind the Commission, if you weren't aware, some of you are and were, and Bill certainly is, and so is Ken. Bender Commercial has a rich history in helping the Suland Heritage Historical Society, specifically with the county courthouse. At the urging of this commission back in 2006, Carol Tweet asked me to chair the fundraising effort for the lighting of the courthouse, and I provided the seed money initially. I think John was on the commission at the time.
Yeah, that's correct.
I provided the seed money and then went out to the business community and assisted in fundraising, about 20, Ken, I can't remember what that was, 20 or $25,000, Bill, was that about right? To assist in lighting the courthouse, to show off really a community jewel that we had. And so I just wanted to make sure, some of you may not be aware of that, because you weren't on the commission at the time, the, just the relationship that we've had with the county. We have done some other real estate transactions for the county, most specifically the 908 building up on West Avenue. We assisted in acquiring that building back about 12 years ago. So, we understand the relationship that we have to have with the county board. We understand, and we certainly respect Ron and his firm and the proposals, I'm sure, are well, but in light of the fact that you're talking about money, and you're talking about how you have to fund things, and the county is tasked with the unfortunate side of the world, you have a limited amount, and yet you're responsible for roads and security and courts, and so you got the toughest job, but in light of all that, I would ask you to seriously consider the fact that we did propose our fee structure so that most times, most occasions, it will be a cheaper fee. And we tried to do that in an effort to give back to the county for those services. So with that, if you have any questions on the specifics or the dollar amounts, I'm really going to defer to my partner, Doug, who has been leading the charge on that, so.
Thank you. Doug Brockhaus, Bender Commercial. I've been a part of the Bender Group since the beginning, which is about 18 years now. And we went through the proposal upon your request to address the items that were entered. Honestly, I don't remember that there was a request to actually price the property in the proposal, and going back to the.
Thanks.
So, we did not do that, so that's part of something that we would do at a later point. The question came up about timing, and does it have to be done right away? We're going through the same exact process today on the CSD building on East 10th Street. The question is, okay, we got to sell it right now today, or should we take some time and get the, find the best buyer and get the largest amount of money for doing that? And it is a time issue. We could sell that property up there tomorrow for a dollar a foot, but that's not what we're looking for. It's a, it's a time versus return situation, and I think over a period of time, you'll see that that'll pay off, that you'll be able to. And the other thing that's happening is things are changing up there, and every day as things change in that part of the city, the price is going to change, so it's kind of an open-ended situation. Any questions on our proposal, or anything that?
Any questions for Bender Realty?
I'll have one under Doug.
Okay. Thanks, Doug.
All right.
We have something, we'll call you back up. Nelson?
Hi, Ron Nelson, Nelson Property Consultants.
Good morning.
Our proposal, we really just kind of focused on the best strategy. I was very upfront with, met with Mr. McFarland initially and Bill, and I just take the essence of the authorship of the proposal seriously, and that is, we want to move this thing fast, and we want to do it at a, you know, obviously the highest possible price. The, I think, goal of, you know, of profession such as ours is, one, to not tell you what you want to hear, but to talk about reality, and so we just kind of looked at, you know, how many transactions of that size in our town happen on a yearly basis? You know, the answer is not many. You know, some years we possibly don't have 20-acre sales. You know, the good news is, we are on a roll as a community, but, you know, the reality still exists, that, you know, this is not in an area Pentagon and the Sanford Sports Complex notwithstanding, it's not an area that, say, Costco would consider. And so, you know, there's just a certain reality that has to be looked at in putting this together, and so, part of where we, as a firm, strategized was simply to, I don't want to say turn it into a media event, but there's some neat things about the objective here that I think would capture the attention of, you know, Rick Nobe's talk show in the afternoon, the Business Journal, Kelo always looking for stories, and so, you know, we really wanted to highlight the objective of building the records storage facility and, you know, kind of take an approach that very much employed a lot of community goodwill in putting that together, and we kind of said, we have no choice. If you want to, you know, try to get this job done, we will get it out there and promoting, and kind of devote the resources of the entire firm to do that, and we didn't really play with the pricing on that, because, you know, we felt that, you know, if we could pull it off, we would have earned it. So, that's kind of the theory behind how we structured our proposal.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson at this point? Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Belinda, did you have a further question?
I'm looking for a copy of the RFP.
There, I didn't find it in there either yesterday. I looked for it.
I didn't see it in here. I see the proposals, but can you give me the criteria of what the RFP was?
The RFP should be, it's listed, should be listed under 10. The RFP should be, it's listed, should be listed under 10A.
10A.
It's just 10.
Got it. Yeah, it's...
Is it at the end?
It's, it's 10A. There are subparts. If you go back to your original agenda item, you'll see 10, 10A, 10B.
Right.
Yeah.
Because due to the size of the documents, we split them up.
What page is it, Ma?
And then...
It's actually item 10 in my...
Yeah, page four. Page four.
Okay. Ma comes up as Nelson's proposal on 10A. 10A is this one.
Yeah, this is a different version than what I even had.
This is the one that I got in Dropbox.
Oh, here we go. There you go.
Okay.
Mine's a different version.
Okay.
The, the, we did list in the proposal, some of the items that must be included in the proposal. And if you would allow, it was the name and address of the individual firm that will perform the work described in the project summary, the name and title and telephone and fax number of the person to conduct contact concerning this proposal submission, names of key personnel who would be assigned to work on this project. Please provide a resume of each person's name, the relevant experience. Does the work by the individual or firm which best illustrates current qualifications relevant to this request for proposals? Please provide a copy of all relevant licenses from the state of South Dakota, availability, when is the firm available to begin providing service to the county, and plan of operations. Provide a description of the proposed services, product offering, and how the services in this request for proposals will be provided. Be advised that this request for proposals is not a bid. However, each firm and individual must include in their proposal, a description of their fee structure, and a full description of any and all costs associated with marketing the property on behalf of the county. And that, and then on the evaluation process, I mean, all proposals received by the county will be reviewed and evaluated by a committee appointed by the Sulan Heritage Museum Board of Directors. That was done. You have the copy of the minutes from that subcommittee meeting. And that, then the Sulan Heritage Museum Board of Directors shall make a recommendation for contract award to the Minnella County Board of Commissioners. That was done. And you have a copy of those minutes as well in Dropbox. And that, and the committee then, you know, looked at those based on an understanding of the requirements of the project as evidenced by the proposal content, the individual or firm's experience, qualifications, reputation, and any other criteria deemed significant to the committee, and the plan of operation and fee structure that is most advantageous to the county, and that they did have the opportunity to conduct interviews and they chose not to do that. And they reviewed the proposals on the strength of the proposals and brought the recommendation to you. And of course, you have the right to, to reject any and all proposals that are brought through you. And that, one of the mandatory provisions of the RFP, and that was in the project summary as well, was that each of the firms provide a copy of the proposed contract, you know, that they would enter into with the county. And that was provided in both instances, the copies of the contract.
Further questions, comments? I do have a couple of comments if you guys are through. I read both of these proposals last night and found them very interesting. I wasn't familiar with Nelson Properties at all until I wrote it. And it was very impressive. Until, I'm sorry, I got to page five and it started talking about while listing the price at 250 per square feet. It's the same price as other sites in proximity, the area, the proximity to the Sanford Sports Complex may offer a slight advantage to prospective buyers and it may take a price reduction over competitive sites to make this site stand out from others and provide incentives to a quick sale. And there were several others in there. We've held this land for five years. I think it's our responsibility to make sure we get the very best price available. It would be wonderful if we could pay for this property specifically by the sale of this land and maybe have leftover moving forward. I was also concerned with the fee structure. One group offers it at 6%. The other offers it at 6, 5.5 or 5, depending on which group of, in the office is working on it. And I, I will not be supporting the recommendation by the Sulan Library or Sulan Museum Board on those grounds. And I apologize if Nelson's were misinformed as to the fact that we wanted a quick sale. If it takes two years to sell us at top dollar, that's what I want to see. I want top dollar. And I'm one of four, so.
Commissioners, I mean, I will stand up here and say that in my meeting with Mr. Nelson, when he was in here, he did indicate, you know, what is the county's timeframe on this. And I indicated that I knew that it was the museum board of directors' desire to move expeditiously on this project this year. And that, you know, that they, that was their sincere hope to begin construction this year. And, and that's why they were hoping that this could be wrapped up soon. So, I mean, if there was any miscommunication involved with anything with Mr. Nelson, that is the conversation I had with him. And I do believe that was an accurate reflection of the desire of the museum board based on comments and things that we went through during budget hearings.
I also think during budget hearings, in fact, I know, we had the discussion about $2, $2.50. And I know myself, and I think several others said, that's not acceptable. So...
And I never mentioned...
Yeah, no, I know I did. So, any other comments or questions for anyone in the audience? With that being said, I would look for a motion.
Well, I'll make, I'll float a motion. I don't know if I'm going to get it. I have a lot of respect for both of the applicants that made their presentations to the commission. Both of them have a history of working with this community. And I respect both of these groups very much. With that being said, though, the motion I'm going to make is to go with Bender Real Estate. And if someone will second it, then I'd like to talk to it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, would you like this to be seconded?
I would like it to be seconded.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second with a comment from Commissioner Pecus.
Thank you. Now, I actually want to, usually we end up speaking before we make the motion. And it's actually not appropriate. We're supposed to make a motion and speak to it. So, I want to be very clear on the record that when we're looking at the proposals that were made, you know, the fee structure that was set up, and I'm not faulting Mr. Nelson for the presentation that was made because he actually vetted it. He did his homework. He made a very good application to the county. But when looking at the price break, for example, 6%, a flat 6%, and let's assume that we're going to get more than 250, or $2.50 a square foot, which was what was actually written in the, in the proposal. Now, assuming we're going to make more than that, if we look at just Bender's proposal, Bender's proposal actually builds in those price breaks. We're actually going to be looking at 6% or potentially, according 5.1% or even down to 5%, depending on the circumstances of, of the sale. So, you know, looking at that, we have a potential for more cash savings. And when we're talking about, for example, merely 1%, merely 1% on a million dollar sale, you can see that that could be a significant amount of money. So, what I would urge the commission to, to do is, is look at the proposals that were presented. And I also hearken back to the history that Bender has had with Minnella County. When we were trying to raise money to get the lighting around that, that courthouse, that was an effort. I mean, it wasn't just something that we, we made a couple of calls. It was choring and effort. That, that was done by Bender. So, I recognize that. I recognize that history. So, that's why I made the motion.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennigan?
My concern is, is that obviously they're, they're both reputable. We, everybody knows that. They've been in business for a long time. The problem is that this is a business decision and it's based on information that one obtained and the other one didn't obtain on trying to get a proposal done quickly or a sale done quickly. And in my mind, that should have been written in the RFP originally, rather than a communication that was done verbally to one party and not the other. Because that would have made a difference, frankly, and, and probably pricing. So, I'm not sure that we've been fair to either one of those two. And I'm going to make a motion to table this and then talk about how this needs to be rewritten and done correctly. Because the difference between 250 and maybe $4, regardless of that half percent issue, which is important, but a buck and a half a square foot over a lot of square feet is significant.
It's a million.
It's millions. Thank you, Michael.
It's a million square feet.
It's a million square feet.
A buck and a half is a big deal. And I think that frankly, the museum board needs to reconsider how this thing was written. And I don't think it was done correctly. So, I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I agree. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I had a motion from Commissioner Bennigan. Could you please state what that was again?
No.
Oh, you didn't. I thought you had a motion.
I do. I'll try to restate it.
I'll make a substitute motion for my motion. And I'm going to make the motion to go ahead and to table the RFPs as they were presented. And we're going to go ahead and send it back to the museum board to go ahead and have them reconsider the proposals as they were presented, disregarding the time of the essence requirement that was considered.
I'll second that. And I would like to reiterate, I think that the museum board probably did what they wanted to have done. But I think our initiative is to sell it for the best possible price, not the fastest price. And it's like selling a used car. If you want to sell it for the cheapest price, you'll sell it quickly rather than what the value is. And it's, we're talking a million square feet or whatever it is. Thank you for the math. I don't think we need to be rushed into this. I think we're making a bad decision if we're doing it based on timing versus price.
Kirsten, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate too, these requirements for, for evaluating these proposals as they're submitted are governed by statute. And one of the things the statute says is, you must determine in writing, one proposal will be most advantageous to the purchasing agency, taking into account the price and also the valuation factors that are actually expressed in the RFP. So, those are the factors that must guide the situation. And I'm not saying they didn't do that, but when, in reevaluating these requests for proposal responses, I encourage them to confine those factors to that expressed in the RFP because that's a statutory requirement here as we reevaluate, so.
Any other questions or comments?
You know, I have a comment. And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'll say it anyhow. It appears to me that we've set this thing up incorrectly, to be honest. And it's not going to be fair to either one of the organizations. And I'm feeling very bad about that. But I've seen other property sales, frankly, that were done by joint ventures of Realtors. And that may be the only fair way that, now that everybody's got their paper on the table, that needs to be considered because, and we should have the museum board consider that because after you open a bid, so to speak, and everybody is exposed to go back and do it, and I know I'll get a legal opinion. The issue is, is I don't know how to do this fair based on the way it was done the first time. Now shoot, Kirsten.
Okay. As it's set up right now, if you're simply tabling these proposal responses, you can only reevaluate what has been submitted on an individual basis. If your sense is to allow for such joint proposals going forward in the future, you would have to dismiss all responses and re, re-solicit another set of responses because other organizations must have the opportunity to respond to that sort of situation if that's something you want to contemplate. So, I'll just throw that out there. See, it wasn't so bad. You did well. Okay.
If I make comment, I'm not...
Yep.
Please.
I appreciate the discussion. And I think there was maybe some misunderstanding. I will say that, I mean, the goal of, of anybody when they list a property is to sell it in a relatively short period of time. So, certainly everyone takes that into account when they're trying to market something. But I wanted to just comment, just on what Gerald just said. You know, it's a policy of our firm not to joint list anything. So, if you're going to rewrite the proposal, then we, with that maybe as an option, then that's fine. Possibly other firms would come in and do that. And I tend to think that if you joint list something, you have two firms that start pointing the finger at each other. And you really end up kind of in a situation where neither party's really representing your interest specifically in, in attempting to sell that. So, if that becomes a requirement, we would not be involved in resubmitting a proposal. So, just so you know that, so.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Bender a question?
Yep.
Mr. Bender?
I'm sorry.
So, what, what would be your suggestion, besides awarding it to your firm?
Well, it sounds like from the statute, you certainly can kick it back to the, the board to review it. I honestly don't see the big issue about the timing because I, I think Ron would say the same thing if he gets up here. I mean, we want to sell for the most amount of money. You're looking for advice and counsel on top of someone to find that buyer and help you negotiate. So, part of the role that we all play is to give you that advice on, on the timing of a property. Because as Doug alluded to, you know, we're about ready to produce our market outlook, which is, be our 18th year of doing that market outlook in about two weeks. So, we're literally in the middle of discussing, analyzing, reviewing all of the land transactions. And clearly, there's been more land transactions in the last 12 months than there was for the last 36 months. So, the market is turning in the right direction, as Ron alluded to. The, the market's picking up. So, what I would tell you is, candidly, I don't, I don't see the issue of a quick sale versus a long sale. Everybody wants a quick sale and you want the most amount of money. Guess what? We get paid more. If we make a quick sale, we make the most amount of money. So, it's really no different in my mind. I understand where you're coming from. It wouldn't have, we wouldn't have priced our services any differently, quite frankly. And quite frankly, if we were attempting a quick sale, we'd price it less anyway because we're spending less time on it. So, if we had that information, we would have priced it the same way anyway, from our standpoint. And of course, commissions are all individually priced by the firm, not by any discussion with other Realtors. So, yeah, I mean, I fully understand you could kick it back to the board to have them review it. But it sounds like they have to review it within the confines of what the RFP was, is what I heard. And, and so I'm not sure much is really going to change from that standpoint. I think, I would urge the commission to make a decision to move forward, to possibly limit the length of time for the listing. Maybe that's a solution, that you give one firm an opportunity to do this for, say, a year instead of, you know, right now, we represent the Sioux Falls School District on a, on a property, which we've sold some other assets for them. But we did a three-year listing with them on the Jofos School on North Cliff, knowing full well that it was going to take a very long time to market that property. We're a year and a half into it and we still haven't sold it. But maybe in this particular situation, you say, all right, we're going to award this to one firm and we're going to give them a one-year listing. And we're going to review that listing at the end of 12 months. And we're going to see what activity they've generated, what market conditions are, and then we'll come back and reevaluate it. So that you're not awarding this for three years to somebody, let's say. It may, it may take that long to generate the dollars you're requesting and the dollars that I believe the property is worth. Because clearly, as the market goes up, and that's what you were going to hear from us in about two weeks, is the, the improved land prices are continuing to go up. And this is an improved price. And clearly, with the infrastructure out there, it's going to keep going up. So, I, you know, it's a bit of a quandary, but I would encourage you to just move forward. So I, you know, it's a bit of a quandary, but I would encourage you to just move forward, make a decision, and then, you know, review. Review and expect results is what I would tell you, so.
Madam Chair, I think we should...
Yeah, absolutely.
Please.
Yeah, Ron.
I feel the same way as Michael about a joint listing. I think people think politically, everybody is served, and reality is there's less services because as Michael said, fingers are pointed. I too also agree that, I'm not quite sure, I was trying to evaluate, you know, not only what you were saying, but kind of the meaning behind what you were saying in terms of going back and reevaluating for another 30 days, and I too was kind of scratching my head in terms of, you know, what is going to be accomplished here. We carried out the expectations that we were given in terms of timing, and so, you know, obviously, you know, we adapt to the needs of a client, and, you know, it kind of takes the pressure off us or, you know, the brokerage community who's hired if there is a little more latitude on timing, you know, and I tried to, as Michael said, you provide advice. I tried to just very nicely, you know, indicate to Bill and to Mr. McFarland that, hey, you know, we'll give it our best, you know, but it's a tall task, and you need to understand that, you know, and if somebody wants to hear that, oh, we'll get $4 for you and we'll do it in three months, I'd say, you know, hire them, you know, because I don't want to be part of the train wreck because it ain't going to happen. And so, you know, I would still reiterate, there is a task in front of you here, and, you know, our job is to stay objective and to provide you, you know, objective, realistic advice. Like I said, the market is moving. There's a lot of good attributes about this opportunity, but, you know, to achieve, you know, what you really want, I mean, it would be nothing more frustrating for a broker to work hard because you do. It's a, this is, it's not for the faint of heart business. Bring you what we feel is the very best that the marketplace has to offer, and you just soundly reject it because, well, we want more. Well, you know, sometimes I'm sorry, what you want isn't necessarily always realistic, you know, and so I think our objective would be to work with the county commission, the Board of Preservation, to discuss very realistically, you know, what vibes we're getting, what input and feedback we're getting from the market, because it would be the ultimate of disservice to you to bring you the very best that the market is capable of when you indeed want to sell, and you decide that, well, you don't like it because, you know, well, that's, we want more, and maybe more isn't there.
Christian Pecos.
Well, Ron did point out something that was interesting in his presentation materials, and that's the fact that there are some unknown factors that anybody that was doing any due diligence before they would ever make an offer to the county for this particular land would have to undertake. For example, I think a big one in the 600-pound gorilla up there is going to be zoning. I think there's going to be some issues if it's going to be a planned development or whatever is going to pass through City Hall to get that kind of variance or whatever they want to do. I think that's going to be a challenge, and I think that, you know, for example, it's going to take time to get that, get your ducks in a row to get that presented, and that was something that you did put in your materials, which I think is the real realistic situation that we're dealing with here is, you know, whoever's going to be interested in this particular property is going to have to do some major due diligence. Would you agree?
Oh, clearly. It just, you know, the price of the land alone, you know, a land price represents maybe 20% of the total project price, so you're looking at probably a $10 million project that would go on this property. So somebody's not going to do a 30-day all cash closing on something like that, and so, you know, that's kind of the realities of just how this works in any land sale of this size.
I'm really hoping the museum board doesn't look at the time of the essence element, kind of focuses on what we have with the RFP.
I'll just reiterate what I said, and I appreciate Michael's comments and Ron's comments, and if, in fact, you both don't want to do a joint listing, I understand that. I'm not a realtor. Frankly, shouldn't even be in the conversation about knowing what's going on. The issue for me is, is the fact that when you do put an RFP together, both people should be educated at the same level and told the same thing, and unfortunately, that's not what I heard or saw when they, when we talked about speed of sale, which isn't my number one criteria. It's the price of the property. With that said, I think we have a responsibility to look at what the best price is.
Commissioner Barham.
I'd ask the recorder what the motion currently is.
She was going to ask for a repeat of the motion.
Oh, good. I think it was a motion to table this and have it go back to the museum board, to have them reconsider the proposals as presented and not considering the time of the essence requirement, which was not part of the, I believe, the RFP.
Commissioner Barham.
I think we should withdraw that motion and pick one of these at this time. So I would ask the authors of that to withdraw it and go back to your original motion.
I'm not going to withdraw that.
That's good because I wasn't going to second it.
I have a comment, and that is that I won't support the motion that you have right now because I think that we should finish this, and I think that they both have said that they can do this in whatever timeframe we want, but the fee structure is still different.
Okay, I'll call the question then.
Okay. The motion is to...
To table it and send it back to the museum board to have them reconsider the RFPs as presented without dealing with the time of the essence requirement, and I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Pecos.
Yes.
Bennega.
Yes.
Barth.
No.
Heiburger.
No.
So motion fails two to two.
Actually...
Is there a substitute motion or second motion?
Well, I guess point of order. If the motion to defer fails and we're missing an extra commissioner, doesn't already get deferred till the next week until we can have a vote?
Mr. McFarland.
I think next week we're missing more commissioners.
So it gets deferred.
The vote could change, though.
Let me stop. Unless there is, it's my belief that unless, if you're deadlocked here, and that there is no other substitute motions or any other motions on the table to proceed with the matter, then you are correct, and that this would automatically be deferred till the next meeting, and that went, and if you still have a missing commissioner, which I believe we will...
We will.
And that, you know, it may still get pushed back, but unless there's another motion on the table, I believe that's how it would work, and Kirsten...
And I just want to add something to that, too. The different effect in letting this linger at the two-to-two vote here is just that there's no direction to the subordinate committees to reconsider. It's a simple tabling. It will come back to you with no further discussion and no further work. It'll come back to you next week as it is right now.
Correct.
If his motion would have passed, he gave direction that it would go back for reconsideration. I'm just clarifying what you're doing.
Well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I will make a motion to approve the Bender contract.
Do I have a second? Can I pass the gavel? You might not get anywhere.
Reluctantly.
I might to second the motion to select Bender Realities based on fees.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think that moving forward is the best choice as opposed to milling about.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I second what he just said because I'm afraid if we bring this back in two to three to four weeks, we're going to be in the same discussion we just had.
Thank you, and Kirsten, you have a comment?
I would just reiterate, I would ask that if you are going to vote on a recommendation, that it be clearly stated in the record what the particular criteria are leading you to make that decision today, because remember, you're making a recommendation now that is contrary to what your subordinate committees have said, so make that clear as that is a statutory requirement.
If I may, then, I would say that there is a favorable percentage on the fee going to the realtors on the Bender proposal. That's not visible, at least when I looked at it on the Nelson proposal.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, then, what we'll do is we'll just take a roll call vote. Cindy?
Commissioner Pecos.
No.
Bennega.
No.
Barth.
Yes.
Heiburger.
Yes.
So now there's no direction.
No mud, no more.
Well, do you want me to pass the gavel back?
So that means we are two to two. This is deferred until there are five commissioners present. No.
Till next meeting.
Till next week?
It's deferred to the next meeting, and that which will be next Tuesday.
Who's gone next week?
Dick.
I believe Commissioner Kelly is still gone.
Yeah. So it will be brought up next week again. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your presentations.
Very sorry.
Sorry for the mess.
This is how process works.
This is how government works.
Yeah, thank you. With that being said, I guess we will move on. Item number 11 is consider a motion to supplement $2,100 from the pass-through grant fund to the pass-through grant budget ASM 20350, representing a grant from the Sioux Falls Community Foundation for the Infant Mortality Review Committee. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, in the past, the community foundation and that through some funds received through the Sanford Foundation donated money to help with the work of the Infant Mortality Review Committee. The last time that we took such an action in this request was back in December of 2010, and that, and there had been no applications for the project since that time. The community foundation once again this year did receive funds, and we are asking that the county act as the pass-through agent for these funds as we have done in the past, and so we're asking for a supplement of $2,100 from the pass-through grants fund to the pass-through grants budget representing the 2014 grant allocation for the Infant Mortality Review Committee.
Madam Chairman.
And that the money is in hand, and that, so we've already received a check from the community foundation.
Commissioner Barth.
I would make a motion to supplement $2,100 with thanks to the Sioux Falls Community Foundation for Infant Mortality.
A motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 12 is consider a resolution to authorize the treasurer to issue a quick claim deed on tax deed number 2565, the north eight of the east eight feet of Lot 8, Lot 10 of Brinkley's addition to the city of Sioux Falls, to the adjacent landowner, and authorize county auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from downstairs. Earlier in 2013, we were dealing with an eight-by-eight parcel of landlocked real estate that came up as a tax deed property. County appraisal board recommended transferring it to the owners of the property that surrounds it, and the owners are referred to as Brown and Williams Properties. Brown and Williams have agreed to accept the parcel and pay future taxes on it. We are asking that the transfer be finalized today. With the signing of this resolution, you're authorizing that the auditor to abate all taxes, interest, and penalties levied against the property. The amount is of 2,514, was $130.66. That's probably gone up a little slightly since last week. We're also authorizing the treasurer to issue a quick claim deed to Brown and Williams. I actually requested today is approval of the resolution, transferring the deed to the surrounding property owner of Brown and Williams, to authorize the auditor to abate all taxes, interest, and penalties levied against the property, and to authorize the treasurer to issue a quick claim deed.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the treasurer to issue that quick claim deed, and I do have a question for the auditor.
A motion?
I'll second.
Second, and a question for Commissioner Barth.
Auditor, do you know how this eight-by-eight lot came into existence?
We do not. We tried investigating it on the assumption that it may have been somebody's easement or something along those lines, but we're not able to find our records far enough back. My theory is maybe one night it fell out of the sky and landed on that ground, and was just there. We've not found it in the last 100 years.
Yeah. I have a motion in a second to approve the quick claim deed. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of two 2014 Ford police utility interceptors in the amount of $53,850 for the sheriff's department from Sioux Falls Ford from bid number 14003, competitively bid and awarded by the city of Sioux Falls. Kristin Trana.
Good morning, Kristin.
Good morning, Kristin Trana with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I am requesting authorization today to go ahead and submit an order for two police utility SUVs. They were competitively bid from the city of Sioux Falls. We did receive better pricing than what we had been seeing in other bids, and so we are excited about this bid. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Kristin?
One faster than the other.
I'll make the motion to get those new cars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of two utility interceptors in the amount of $53,850 for the sheriff's department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14 is a briefing by TSG Marketing requesting county participation in mountain bike park feasibility study. Robert Wilson?
No. No? Good morning.
Mr. Stratton.
Randy Stratton, and he's going to be giving us a briefing.
Okay, good morning. My name's Randy Stratton, TSG Marketing here in Sioux Falls. Been in marketing and public relations here in Sioux Falls for 20 years. Part of my work is research and development, recreation, and so I've been working for some time now to establish additional recreation assets within our area. I do travel a fair amount with my work and enjoy other, what other cities and counties are doing regarding healthy initiatives for those counties and those cities. So what I'm going to do briefly here, just go through a quick PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to skip a few slides and get into the study itself and seek participation from the county.
So basically, experimental, experiential outdoors bicycling, urban development, travels, park benefits to this, and destination travel are some of the benefits of developing recreation assets. I understand the county itself doesn't have a lot of park and recreation assets that you own, but there's some possibilities within existing public land, properties and private lands that are being considered at Minnehaha County for development in a park and recreation. In terms of economic development, what a lot of cities and counties are doing is understanding that when young families move to an area, they want something for their family to do and their kids to do. That also fits in well to healthy initiative. What you see under the bullet points here, the quality of life parks and recreation now has moved to the number one spot nationwide of why people relocate to a specific area. So looking at the rural community of Minnehaha is establishing what are the assets. The state, the state of South Dakota right now, you may have heard, is repurposing some of their state parks, and in those, in those repurposing efforts, they're trying to establish what would be a better use of that land for the county or the city that's nearby relative to outdoor recreation. In Colorado, their number one, their number one economic development tool and message is outdoor recreation, and it's working. It's paid dividends in terms of lowering healthcare costs, providing more recreation, and also destination tourism. As we know, in economic development, in the rural counties that we live here in South Dakota, the typical targets for rural business is life sciences, green energy, animal health. The other new one is lifestyle target, is there's actually additional economic development business that can be, can be part of this, as well as the benefits of getting people in more healthy lifestyles. One example I want to share with you today is Decorah, Iowa. Decorah, Iowa is part of Winneshick County in northeast Iowa. The county's about 25,000 people. What Winneshick County decided to do was ask themselves at county level and some of the boards is how do we lower our healthcare costs? How do we get our people more active? How do we create assets for destination and also for our residents to enjoy? And so what the city of Decorah has done in Winneshick is put initiatives together, working with the state of Iowa, in building assets, building trail systems out in the rural areas, and connecting them to assets within the communities, including mountain bike parks, the rivers where they can do a kayak, and so forth. The mountain bike park in Decorah, Iowa started by... The mountain bike park in Decorah, Iowa, started by volunteers, and now it's turned into a destination site, as you can see here by this map. The city parks department has taken over maintenance and development because it's become such a jewel for the city, attracting business, attracting tourism, and all kinds of things. Decorah, Iowa, is about 7,500 people right now, and they're really gaining a lot of attention for that. 115 acres, this park is, single-track, 22 miles. Just quickly, statistics, I'm just going to go breeze through these. Wisconsin, Minnesota, just from biking economic development, meaning manufacturing, wholesaling, retailing, that's including tourism, hotels, and so forth. Wisconsin did 1.5 billion in bike-related business in 2012. We know about the Minnesota culture. Minnesota did 1 billion in 2012 in revenue, again, related to tourism and building these assets. South Dakota, I've got 30 to 40 million here, but actually it's more like 20 to 30 million we did. And so we have a lot of opportunity here because it is a growing sector, and Minnehaha County is sitting in a prime position, along with Lincoln County, for developing these So, the point of the presentation here is just to give you an idea that regionally and nationally, there are trends supporting developing assets like this to help reduce healthcare costs, getting our families and our people more active outside mountain bike parks specifically. The return on the investment has been phenomenal across the Midwest, in Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, Michigan. They're putting in these bike parks. The destination travel that's occurring from these is quite phenomenal. They've realized now in Minnesota and Wisconsin from studies that the individuals coming in to enjoy these assets, they spend more than hunters and snowmobilers combined on a per-capita basis. Okay, so, this is what my company does. The purpose of the feasibility study, and why I'm here today, is to ask your participation in this multi-agency feasibility study to determine what assets are available here potentially in Minnehaha County that could work in conjunction with another city like Sioux Falls or another county like Lincoln, in perhaps creating a destination facility that not only our residents can use, but can be used as a destination park as well. Some of the discussions have been already completed with the state of South Dakota, game fishing parks. They're very interested in this study. They're very interested in looking at assets that they own within Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, and Union County, to see if potentially a mountain bike park could actually be located there. And so that's what prompted this feasibility study. Lincoln County, I met with them last week through this presentation. We discussed the feasibility study. They liked the intent and the plan here with the feasibility study. They gave me the green light last week unanimously. State game fishing parks basically told me that they wanted to see a couple modifications to it. They want to participate. We have not come to a dollar agreement yet where they can be. They think it's going to be, they could support this up to like four to five or $6,000. That's why I'm taking a multi-agency approach with this. So if you've read through this, if you looked at this at all, this on page four, where the pricing is, there's two ways to participate that I've set up. If a one- or two-agency participation was going to take place in the feasibility study, then it would be in that 16,000 to 19,000 range. If it's going to be a multi-agency with game fishing parks in more than two counties or cities, we're in the 28,000 to 34,000 range. So why would Minnehaha County want to participate in the study? Well, what you'll get from that, you'll get the data to understand if it was built in the county, what kind of asset do we have? If it's built in Lincoln County, what do we have? Who would participate in the development of the park? What would it mean for tourism to the area? What would it mean to recreation for our own citizens in Minnehaha County? And, like a lot of counties, Dakota County and Minnesota, which is Apple Valley, they have a mountain bike park called Lebanon Hills. And what they've started to do, as well as Winnebago County, is look at data saying, what are healthcare costs now? What were they two years ago? And because of our more active society now and these recreation assets, what are we actually doing to reduce our healthcare costs? So they're seeing some trends in that direction. There's four pages in the feasibility study. There's a lot of information here, so for the sake of time, I can go through some of this with you to try to answer your questions, and we can refer to another time if you'd like, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about the specifics of what's in here and how the county would benefit.
Questions for Mr. Stratton? Commissioner Barth?
Thanks for bringing this up. I think it's very interesting. That said, we don't have any money. But I've been to Decorah. I've walked those bike paths that you're showing. I've even thought about buying a bicycle in Decorah to leave for my use when I'm visiting there. But I think there is a great potential for bicycling in Minnehaha County. I've thought about the idea of linking Sioux Falls to Dell Rapids and going over to Jasper and coming back through Brandon. I must say, though, that big boulders and my path are not a big turn-on for me anyway. I like it smooth. But, you know, I think that there should be some corporate sponsors out there that could help us, but we really don't have an extra nickel at this point in our business.
Right, and just to address your comment about the trails, this would incorporate looking at connecting trails for road biking as well. So the data would be, and this would also include, who would actually come in for road biking? What trails could connect assets like in Dell Rapids and Garrettson, Valley Springs, and Brandon, and so forth, with Sioux Falls and our park trail system? That information would come out of the study as well. Because in Lincoln County, what they like to do is, of course, they've got Chautauqua Park in Canton. They want to connect that with Newton Hills, with Blood Run, and with the other trail systems. So the data from this would actually help support what that trend would look like in the benefit to the county.
Well, when I think of mountain biking, I think of the rough-and-tumble type of biking environment that you're going to be looking at, for example, out at Great Bear, or something that has a lot of hills. And that obviously would gravitate towards the Garrettson area, moving south all the way down through Good Earth, all the way down to Newton Hills. I think that is an untapped potential. I think that once you get out beyond, for example, the confines of the eastern portion of the city of Sioux Falls, there's a lot of interesting topography that you could ride through between Sioux Falls, at least east Sioux Falls, and Brandon, going all the way to Valley Springs. And of course, at the edge of Valley Springs, you're talking Minnesota. So really, we're talking about an area that is unique. The Sioux River area with Jasper, the Pipestone, really is an interesting area. When I was, you know, 25 years ago, when I was down at the University of Nebraska, we used to have people that used to drive all the way up from Lincoln just to do rock climbing up at, you know, Garrettson, because that was the only place to climb rocks. We have some unique topography here in Minnehaha County with the river system. It'd be nice if we could find a way to do this type of feasibility study, because I really think there are some interesting opportunities out there in the future, whether or not it has a benefit for impacting health. I'll rely on the actuaries to crunch the numbers on that. But the reality for me is that we do have some opportunities. Jeff, you've championed this for years, and I know, and you're the first one that said we don't have any money right now. Well, you know, the reality is that my fear is that we're never going to have any money. But, for example, we've talked about this at UDC and CCOG. I mean, we've looked at the studies about bike trails. Have you talked to CCOG?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I did talk to CCOG, and they did explain, for example, the railroad track that's running from Brandon to Valley Springs that could potentially be repurposed in some time in the future. I've already met with Garrettson several times, so I understand what they would like to do in enhancing that area. Because really, it can all be connected. It really can. Now, whether it's going to be a road bike, a road trail on a shoulder, or if it's connecting a railroad, or rebuilding the railroad track and connecting to, like I say, Palisades and coming back, all that makes sense.
Right.
Because that's just what you're seeing over in Winnebago County and some other places like in Spicer, Minnesota, in that area. So it's, the return on the investment is really amazing. That's the thing that I see, is that the tourism dollars coming in to those small communities is significant, plus the health benefits to the local residents, that they can ride their bike here and there. Harrisburg, I'm meeting with them next, if they want in. Canton wants in. Because Harrisburg is fast, and Harrisburg is growing. What they said to me was, we've got to get more recreation here, and we'd like to have our moms and our dads taking their kids ride down to the park, maybe ride down to Elvin, or maybe Good Earth or something, and coming back home. And so we're really in a great position here in Minnehaha County, Lincoln County, to develop something significant that benefits all of our taxpayers and visitors.
Commissioner Bennigan?
Randy and I have talked before. I think this is an excellent idea. The issue is always funding. Maybe we could get our DUI people to start riding bikes, and then we'd be better off. The issue is that I'm not sure right now where we would place that in a budget, and I think that has to be researched. You know, the normal process would be parks and rec. But the idea is good, and I think it does enhance people's lifestyles. Again, the question is where those dollars come from.
Yeah.
This was a briefing at this point, and I think that gives us the opportunity to look to see if we've got someplace or if we're interested moving forward. And at that point, then it would have to come back as an item on the agenda for a motion. So, thank you very much, Randy.
Thank you.
One question I had for you is when the park was done on the east side of town, and it was a community appeals process, and the connectivity from there to Brandon was discussed at that time, and I believe the Sioux Falls Area Foundation contributed a substantial amount, is there grant possibilities for that?
Well, we have started to look at some of the grant possibilities, that there is that possibility out there, and the other comment about the corporate sponsorships. There may be possibility for corporate sponsors. We're talking to certainly, if you saw my reference page there, you mentioned, for example, Two Wheeler Dealer, for example. Of course, they represent mountain bike parks and road bikers. They have not been asked, but I think that there could be, because of the lifestyle component here, there could be some grant money. We have not approached that side yet.
We have two wonderful realtors represented here today.
Yes.
That just enhances what they're selling.
That's right. And I know their phone number, so they'll be getting...
If you can make that bike bath go close enough to Larchwood, there might be a casino that can...
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Randy? Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. The next item is an update and status report of the 89th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson?
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. First bill I'm going to look at this morning on your briefing memo on page two, House Bill 1094, an act to prohibit a person from interfering with a public safety answering pointer, PSAP. This is a bill that I've talked with Darren Ketchum a couple of times before. It really stems out of an issue they've been dealing with in Brown County. I don't know that it's really something that Darren has dealt with here, but it's interesting in that they had a number of issues over the last year where they were having their operations really hindered by somebody who just made repeated, basically nonsense calls into the center and causing a real problem in answering legitimate calls. And this, what this bill would do is attach a felony to a conviction for acting in this manner and causing that problem. And in committee testimony, it was basically described that that was requested or asked for because they, in the Brown County incident, they found that somebody was in Minnesota. And being able to prosecute or go after somebody in another state would need to be a felony versus a misdemeanor. So, again, not something that we have a direct connection to, but would be something that would potentially have an impact if we found ourselves with that, in that situation.
Just have a question or comment about that.
Yeah.
I can see this would be a huge problem, but wouldn't somebody who repeatedly called 911 be possibly a mental challenged person and charging him with it? You know, telling him, you're going to get a class six felony, it's not probably going to make any difference, and maybe there's deeper issues than somebody who's just repeating... I mean, what is the reason that this person is repeatedly calling? I mean, maybe that's part of the question, too.
Well, in listening to the testimony when it was first up in committee last week, it sounds like that's not an isolated thing. This is something that PSAPs across the country occasionally deal with, and it can be a variety of reasons that they, if they identify who's making the calls, the issues and things that are at the core, that can be a wide variety. And so that may be the case in some, but not all appears. Another one is a bill...
You know, this is really unfortunate, because I do believe that there actually probably are federal statutes that would govern this. You know, if you're using a telephone to effectively affect what's going on at a PSAP, wherever it is, whether it's a 911 system, that's a weapon of mass disruption if you're basically closing down that center with your incessant stupid telephone calls. And I'm pretty sure that's covered by federal statute. But the problem is if the US Attorney doesn't want to do anything about it, talk to your US Attorney and get him to do something. But otherwise, suppose we can pass another felony, fill up our prisons, so, anyway.
Just one that I thought I'd bring to your attention. Another one is the House Bill 1096, and this is one that we had talked about over previous weeks, an act to revise certain provisions concerning the campaign signs on the premises of non-publicly owned buildings. And that would, again, be in the area outside the 100-foot distance from the entrance to a polling location. And when that was in committee, there were some significant questions that were identified with that, and that one was deferred to the 41st day. So that one, at this point, is no longer in play. One that I brought to you last week was 1179, that would have, an act provided for a credit for the return of certain motor vehicle license plates. And that's the one that the Treasurer's Office brought to us, that if somebody purchases the vehicle license, has the vehicle for four months, six months, and then sells it, returns that, that they would be due some kind of a credit. That's up in committee this morning in House Local Government, and we'll obviously keep a close eye on that one. Another one that I wasn't quite sure what the background on this is, that I noticed, was 1233, an act to provide for the recall of certain state and local elected officials. And they're going up and down the list of state level, local level, municipality, school boards, counties, in raising the percentage of signatures required to initiate a recall. And so I, some of these bills that come up every once in a while, I'm interested to see what the background is. And this one has not been scheduled for a hearing yet, but seems, I'm curious what the reason on that is, and I'll be looking forward to hearing that.
Did they at least amend it so they could include commissioners now? Because for some reason, the omitted commissioners would interrupt the statute.
This one does include...
Okay, finally.
So we can now recall, maybe could re-call a commissioner.
Spoken like a judge.
And then I will jump to the bill that I think we're all, we've all been most interested in, Senate Bill 111. And that is the one that would change the property tax limitation statute, that would increase the maximum increase in the property tax year-to-year from the current of 3% or CPI, whichever is less, to 3% or CPI, whichever is greater, capped at 4%. And that had a hearing Friday morning before Senate appropriation. I know a number of you were up there for that hearing. Mr. McFarland testified at that hearing. I'll turn it over to him for any comments that he may wish to make. But from listening on the internet, it sounded like Minnehaha County was well-represented, and the challenges that we face were articulated very well, and how this could help was described. And they did not act at that time. They had a very full committee agenda that morning, and so they took testimony on this and a number of other bills without action. And I've heard since that there's a possibility that that could be referred to another committee prior to action, that it may be referred to Senate taxation before it was actually heard in Senate approbes, the testimony was taken in Senate approbes. So we, there's, the list on the website right now is just simply is deferred to another day. And so we'll keep an eye on that one. I know we'll get word from, from Bob Wilcock... I know we'll be, we'll get word from Bob Wilcox, who's representing the association, as soon as he hears anything one way or the other on that one.
Just to comment on that, I just wonder what you think about maybe sending a letter out, or even making some phone calls to other counties. There were only three counties represented, and I think that we got a very good positive response from the Appropriations Committee while we were there. That being said, of course, nothing happened, but I think that we need to have more than three people representing us. And I think if they felt like they had a leg to stand on, maybe we could get some more people either calling them, talking to them, sending them an email, or showing up for this next meeting. We need more people than just three counties, because this is significant for everyone. I can start naming counties who are having trouble financially, it's not just us. Commissioner Burr?
I just would say that besides Minnehaha County, we had two other people. One was the President of our Association, and then the Vice President of our Association. We really didn't have rank-and-file county commissioners from across the state.
And Bobby Wilcox's office did send out, you know, grassroots alert, you know, we need people here, we need emails, we need, and I don't know if we got emails or not, that's unknown to me, but we only had those few people represented. And I think that it might be a good idea on our part to reach out to our partners. This was passed at our convention to go for, but we need support. Commissioner Ken.
I know one of the things that we also did, that the Association did, because as a result of some of our discussions with members of the Senate Appropriations Committee, and again, I don't know, you know, what the results of that were, but I specifically asked that the Association send out messages to those counties who had senators who sat on Senate appropriations to specifically reach out to them, to tell the story of their own county as well. And so, and I know that that was done, but again, I don't know how many of those emails went out after we made that request.
Right. I just wonder if we should, as commissioners, put some pressure on whether you want to pick up the phone yourself and get names and numbers from Ken. So, just offering it as a suggestion.
Well, I was just going to comment that, interestingly enough, I actually had some responses from some constituents yesterday concerned about their property taxes going up, related to this particular issue. And I also noticed on the Argus Cedar article, there wasn't one comment, which is really interesting as well. Usually, when you're talking about taxation, a lot of people start commenting, at least on the website, but I did get some calls from some constituents. And I think there seems to be some lack of understanding, you know, anytime somebody talks about, you're changing the tax structure, so obviously, you're going to be raising my taxes. There is at least a tacit understanding from the presentation, at least from what was written in the Argus Cedar article, where most of these people got their information, that there was something fundamentally flawed, the way the system was set up for constantly going to the counties as your safety valve. And the glib response from the legislators is that, well, if you really need to raise money, you're just going to have to opt out. Well, the reality is that we're doing essential state services. You know, you don't drive to peer to pay your taxes, you drive to your county courthouse. And those are housed with county employees, and we do the state bidding. So, essentially, you can't sit there and constantly walk into your oldest child's room and steal the money off the dresser and assume that all the problems of the world are going to be solved by stealing the money off the county's dresser every night. And the reality is that I think some legislators understand that. And so, there is a curve, a learning curve, that a lot of our legislators get, and I think some of them are there at this point. And you can't chronically underfund one of your partners in government, which would be the county. The state can't chronically underfund it and turn around, and then act surprised when Bennett County's looking at bankruptcy. Because if there's one of us looking at bankruptcy, I guarantee you that there are other counties out there that haven't really looked sharply at their budgets, that could be on the verge. And we just don't know that right now, but they won't be the first.
I think it was Senator Van Gerpen, was it, that really understood where we were coming from and brought up the question of, you know, what was the original purpose of opt-outs? The original purpose of opt-outs was when you have a big capital project to do, or if you have some big issue come up, it isn't the day-to-day trying to finance county government. And he got it, and he expressed it very eloquently to the whole room, that we have a significant problem that county government is now going on a regular basis to opt-outs, just to try to make the bottom line.
Yes, and I had a nice conversation with him on Monday after the committee hearing, and he was asking for our comments. And I reiterated, I says, at least from the county people who were there at that hearing, I mean, the comment, the universal comment was Senator Van Gerpen, he got it. And that the opt-outs were, that opt-outs really, as they were pitched before, if there was something special that you needed to do, you know, like build a jail, or you needed, you know, to convince your taxpayers to do that. But, it's gotten to the point where they're becoming necessary for operating expenses to day-to-day, and, you know, any law that's that old really needs to be tweaked if it's not working. And if you look at the last two opt-outs that the county has done, and that Minnehaha County, they were specifically, you know, those two specific opt-outs were for day-to-day operating. And that you have a $1.6 million opt-out that you did, that you called public safety, that we hired police officers and, or, excuse me, sheriff's personnel, and, you know, ambulance funding, the whole thing. And that, and then, of course, most recently, the $4 million, just to maintain current operations. We really didn't add anything new to the table at that point, so.
I have asked Ken's office when they have time, I know they're working on a lot of projects, to put together some numbers over the last 10 years of, had we been funded at the 3%, where would we be at now? Would we have had to do both of those opt-outs? At least we'd be closer. I think it's much easier to take a small amount of money on a regular basis to keep us going than to hit everybody with a $4 million opt-out, because we're looking at more opt-outs coming in the future if things continue to progress as they are. Had we been slowly saving money as the years go by, we might have been in a lot, well, we would have been in a lot better shape. And so, Ken's going to put some numbers together for us that we can add to the graph that we already have been working on. Any other questions or comments on 111? All right, Robert, you have anything else for us?
Not at this time. Got a number of bill committee hearings today that we'll be watching.
Thank you. The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any more, or any, Commissioner Burr?
By the way, I could go on and on about Senate Bill 111. But, I just want to say that as regards to the museum board, which I'm on, because of our executive session stuff, I walked into the subcommittee on the realtor issue just as they voted. I mean, right as they voted. And then I was in peer during the regular museum board meeting, which was on my schedule, but because of the minute man aspect of going to peer, I went to peer.
I had noted that you had not made either of those meetings, and so he couldn't make a comment on our position on it, which I thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Commissioner Burr?
You know, I've only been a commissioner for just over seven years, but I've been attending commission meetings for probably 12 years. And during that whole time, I don't think I've seen a city councillor attend a meeting, except for let's bend again on high. And certainly not one that stayed here for the whole meeting. Oh yeah, Commissioner Kelly, but where is he?
Be nice.
Anyway, we also, I mean, I can't remember us having a mayor pop in and listen to a whole, he's still here. He's listening to our whole meeting. He's learning about some of the problems that we have and the pitfalls of being a county commissioner as opposed to a city councillor. Swimming pools, tennis courts, ice rinks, movie stars. We don't have them. But, thanks for coming, Greg.
I'd like to echo that too. Thank you, Mr. Jamison, for coming. I think it's important that you knew what we're doing, and I think that anyone who has served on your board and then come to ours said, you guys don't get it. So, thank you for being here.
I'm sure one more comment on that. I think Commissioner Benega once made a comment that he didn't think that the city councillors knew the majority of what we do as a county.
I think he said 80%. Yeah, I think he said he missed about 80% of what we do, so. Any other new business? Any old business? Being said, we have executive session for legal briefing, contracts, and pending litigation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.